I would like to welcome you to the Austin Council, City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the City of Austin Ethics Review Commission. I am Frances McIntyre, President of the Austin League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters will be moderating this forum for candidates to the Austin City Council Places 1, 3, and 4. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization with both men and women members that promotes the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League does not support or oppose candidates or parties. The League members who are helping tonight are Lisa Harris, Stuart Snyder, Judy Klack, Ann Clark, Margaret Orange, Gwen Santiago, and Nan Clayton. This forum is being televised by Channel 6 and will be repeated many times before the election. Channel 6 is to be commended for their, for providing information for the public and exposure for all the candidates. The format tonight will be as follows: one minute opening statements, one minute closing statements, and rotating questions with one minute to answer. Our timekeeper will hold up cards denoting the time you have left. Thirty seconds is the main card. All the questions originate from the League and are unknown to the candidates. Before we begin, let me state that the views here expressed are those of the candidates and not the sponsor, the Ethics Commission, or the League. According to the guidelines of the League of Women Voters, there must be no applause or demonstrations of support or opposition from visitors in this room. Candidates are asked to refrain from any personal attacks. We will begin with the one-minute opening statements with Randy Shade.
Thank you very much. First, thanks to the League for putting this on. I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate the viewers who are watching to learn more about the issues. City Council races aren't known for large voter turnouts, and every vote does count, and it really matters that you're paying attention to the issues that affect you locally. My name is Randy Shade, and I am the incumbent for Place 3, and I'm looking forward to getting support for a second term. A couple of years ago, when I was elected, I came to the City Council with a tremendous track record in business and in nonprofit volunteerism and even public sector involvement when I worked for Governor Richards and launched AmeriCorps statewide. Since I've been at City Hall, my primary focus has been core city services, clean, safe neighborhoods, reliable, affordable utilities, and making sure that the city operates with some, as much common sense as possible, and running an office that is responsive to all citizen needs, whether it's a longtime activist or a newcomer. So I really appreciate your interest again. I look forward to talking about the issues at this discussion, and again, I thank you for your vote if you're so inclined.
Okay, Ms. Tovo.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League for sponsoring this forum this evening. My name is Kathy Tovo, and I'm running for City Council Place 3. And I have been involved and have been around City Hall for almost a decade as a community volunteer. I served in my neighborhood association, and I also served on the city's planning commission, on the Waller Creek Citizens Advisory Committee, and several others, just to name a few. I've also had an active role on several AISD committees, including the most recent Facilities Master Plan Task Force, where I was co-authored a report advocating against school closures. And I'm running for City Council because I believe we need a City Council member who listens and respects the people of Austin, and that is the kind of community leader I have been and pledged to be as a council member. I will work hard on issues of affordability, affordable housing, including, and also on making good decisions that don't unnecessarily raise costs for Austinites, on moving toward planning that creates communities where people can access the basic services they need close to home, from education to transportation to grocery stores and high-quality childcare, and on working with our school district partners to keep our neighborhood schools open and vital, and on partnering to keep our educational system strong. This is an area of, not under the city's direct control, but it is an area of critical importance. Thank you.
Mr. Nossinger.
Thank you. My name is Max Nossiger. I've lived in Austin since 1974. I have 32 years of experience in local government and have served for nine years on the Austin City Council. I believe that City Hall is spending way too much money. The spending line is going like this. It is totally unsustainable. In addition to that, there are several projects that have recently been approved, like the chip burner, water treatment plant number four, and now light rail. These projects total over $4 billion, and none of them are necessary. We need to start spending money only on necessary items because people are being priced out of our city: musicians, artists, poor people, and even the middle class. This city is being turned into a playground for the wealthy, and that is contrary to the nature of Austin. I want to get back to City Hall to bring some sanity to spending and to keep Austin's true culture. I am a musician myself, and I can appreciate what the musicians are going through here.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
My name is Chris Bailey, and I am also running because I feel that the city has lost control of its fiscal responsibility. I'm a small business owner. I've grown up in Austin, and I live in South Austin. We don't currently have any city council members that are living south of the river right now. One of the, one of the things, like I said, I'm a small business owner, but I'm also an insurance adjuster. I've been in the insurance field for about 10 years now. And with my job, I have to oversee the spending of millions of dollars, and I have to be accountable for every single dollar that I spend. And so this is something that I'm used to with my job, and I really think that we need to really be accountable for all of the money that we're spending because it's massive amounts of money. A lot of my issues are public safety issues. I really think that the central goal of the City Council is focused on four things: fire, police, EMS, and the roads. And I think that we've actually lost that at City Council, and we're getting into all these, these other, other projects, and so I really would like to bring the focus back to these core essential services of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. This is the first question, which will direct to Councilmember Shade. Austin currently has six council members and a mayor elected at large in a citywide election. What council configuration is best for Austin and why?
Well, there's no easy answer to this question. I'll say first that it's important for the Austinites to vote on this issue. Austin citizens need to vote on this. This should not be something that's handed to us by a court system or by the state legislature. Austinites have voted on this six times, and they've voted down the idea of single-member districts. It's definitely something that people are talking about again, and I welcome the conversation. But frankly, I have more questions than answers about whether or not that is a good solution for this community. In Austin, right now, I'm accountable to 100% of the citizens, and I think, I've been thinking hard about my experience and what it would be like if I was only accountable to 15% of those residents. My votes might be very different. I take all votes with the community at large in mind, and I think that when you talk about expenses... Oh, I still have 30 seconds, sorry. I thought that was the end. Sorry about that. We have concerns about low voter turnout. Maybe one way to solve the problem, it would just be to move elections to November. I would like to look at each problem and try to assess what best solution is, instead of trying to propose some map or some new idea that may or may not end up getting us to a better place. Again, my parents live in, I've mentioned this before in another forum, but my parents live in Dallas, where they've moved to single-member districts, and if your neighborhood rep isn't somebody that you agree with, you're kind of out of luck.
Thank you. Ms. Tovo. Austin currently has six council members and a mayor elected at large in a citywide election. What council configuration is best for Austin and why?
I believe it is time for Austin to move toward a system that includes single-member districts as well as at-large seats. I think we, we do have a lot of members of the community who feel that that would be a system that provides more diversity on our council, more geographic diversity, and also with the introduction of single-member districts, I think we would see a more engaged citizenry. I think people would take a more active involvement in their local public process, which is good for all of us. I do think that we need to think carefully and have a very serious community discussion about the number of seats. As some of the early discussions have demonstrated, if we have too few single-member seats, it will be difficult to assure adequate minority representation, and that will be a big concern for all of us. We want to have a system that provides for enough minority representation, adequate minority representation, especially among the African-American community.
Thank you. Mr. Nossinger, do I need to repeat the question?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. I believe we do need single-member districts. I prefer a mixed system, probably four at-large and then four districts. We could use, actually, the boundaries the county uses or some approximation thereof. I think this would ensure ethnic representation, no longer having to rely on the so-called gentleman's agreement, and it would ensure geographic representation. I live in South Austin, have for a long time, and there's no one from South Austin on the current City Council. This is clearly not right, and we need to rectify that situation. Also, I think it will decrease costs of campaigning, because you have, especially for the districts, you'll have a finite area to work, and also, there is the hope that it will increase voter participation. Right now, we're down in the single digits in terms of people voting, and when that happens, government does not work. Democracy works only when most of the people participate, so we need to really hope and think of how we can do that.
Mr. Bailey, the same question.
I also support single-member districts. At the same time, though, I think it is a great idea, and I also support moving the elections to November for City Council. I think that that would greatly increase voter turnout. Really, when it boils down to it, I'll support, I'll support any plan that gives the people of Austin greater representation in their government. So when, when it gets down to it, I've seen a lot of different, a lot of different plans out there. Some people are talking about moving towards nine council members, some are talking about 12, some are talking about more than that. It starts getting really big, but at the same time, we really need to keep it to where, if you're having a problem in your area, when you go into your local grocery store, when you go into HEB, you need to be able to look your council member in the face. You need to be able to see them and say, "Look, here's the problems I'm having. You live in this area, you know about these problems, let's get something done." So that's why I do support single-member districts.
All right. The next question, the number of our population who are 200% below the federal poverty level is increasing. What would you do to stem this tide? Mr. Bailey.
I think that the comprehensive plan really is something to be looked at at this point. We're encouraging a lot of urban growth, and we're doing it at the expense of lower-income people, and just go no further than one mile east of this building. And what you see is the slow and steady gentrification of Austin. We're promoting a lot of developers to come in, and we're raising property values in the areas of town that were affordable, and it's pushing people out. The City Council currently has their eyes on East Riverside Next with the East Riverside Corridor Plan. I've seen the pictures. They're, they're real pretty. They make East Riverside look like Europe, but it's just not right. It's expensive, it drives up property taxes, it makes the city even more unaffordable. And so we really need to look at the way that we're encouraging growth and driving up property taxes and making it even more unaffordable for everybody. We need to keep people in their homes, and we need to stop trying to push growth so much in the, in the, in the core of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Tovo, same question.
I think it's very serious concern. I think the census numbers that we just have seen in the last months show that this is really an increasing problem in our community and that the numbers, the numbers of children living in poverty are even higher. I believe that the city should take a very active role in increasing services and really prioritizing, as we look across the budget, prioritizing basic need services. I had the opportunity to serve for several years on the Community Action Network's Community Council, and so I was able to learn of the really very good private nonprofit organizations out in our community that can help. And so the city should continue to support them through its programs and to require, when we are putting public dollars into economic development incentive programs, we need to be very careful to make sure that the job creation that is going to go on in our community is going to create good jobs that pay a living wage and provide access to healthcare, because all of those things drive up people's costs and make it very difficult to live here. So whatever the city can do to continue to promote good jobs that pay living wages and provide access to affordable childcare and affordable housing, we need to take a proactive move toward.
Councilmember Shade.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned before, I have a really strong background working in the health and human services arena. Before I got onto the council, I served on several boards and as a volunteer of many of the nonprofits that provide the greatest amount of services to the people that you're talking about. And you're right, the, the number of people who are facing poverty is, is growing. I think we're now at about 37% of our population who's houseburdened. So we need to do everything we can to preserve existing affordable housing. We, I was a strong proponent of basically partnering with Meals on Wheels and the Urban League and American Youth Works and the Austin Area Interreligious Ministries, which runs Hands-on Housing, so that we could use bond money to actually help keep people in their homes. These are low-income folks. We were able to keep them in their homes, provide weatherization in order to lower their utility bills, which, and same thing with on the water utility side. These are the kind of things that the city should be engaged in. It makes our dollars go farther. I was the chair of the Public Health Committee and was able to re-contract out for the first time since the mid-1990s our social service contracts. I hope that we can increase that, that pot soon, but in the meantime, I want to be directing the dollars that we spend on that to direct city services, and I have a good track record for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Nossiger.
Thank you. We need to approach this issue from two ends. One is to reduce spending, which is why I'm running for City Council. We need to eliminate unnecessary, expensive, ineffective projects. The second is, we need to build the economy. When I was on the City Council in the late 80s, there was a severe economic downturn, and we set about to build the tourism industry by moving the airport to Bergstrom, building the convention center, and creating Austin as the live music capital of the world. The tourism industry is going strong. We also gave incentives to several local high-tech industries, and that provided good jobs in the community for more than 30 years. Now, those jobs are relocating elsewhere, and we need to replace them. I have a program to help Austin become the electric vehicle capital of the world: bikes, cars, and buses. This will provide jobs for another three decades, and also to, in the realm of energy, to put solar panels on rooftops, to sell our coal plant, and move into the future of clean, inexhaustible energy.
This question will be directed to Ms. Tovo. What has gone right and what has gone wrong in the city's comprehensive planning process? Are there changes you would make?
As a planning commissioner, I had the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission's Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, so I've been following the comprehensive plan for the last 18 months. I think there have been some challenges, and we have heard from the community that they wanted to see some, some different scenarios tested. They wanted to see some additional data, and some of that has, has come from the city, and some of that will come in part, in, in the working group process. One of the other very serious challenges early on was getting a diverse group participating in the comprehensive plan process. And as a subcommittee, we spoke with the staff about that and the consultants, as did the Citizens Advisory Task Force. And I'm, I'm really pleased to say that the really creative efforts of the staff and the consultants have begun to boost participation among the underrepresented groups, and that's really critical. If we want this to be a vision for our community, we really do need to make sure that we have all voices in the process, so I feel very optimistic.
Mr. Nossinger.
Thank you. I think one of the huge problems with that plan is that it presupposes that we want light rail, which in fact, I don't think we do. First of all, we can't afford it. Second, it is ineffective in reducing traffic congestion and improving air quality, and these are two very pressing issues we do have. If we spend all our money on light rail, we don't have any money to address these two pressing issues. In my neighborhood, Travis Heights, the plan has light rail coming down South Congress Avenue, which means that a quarter-mile on each side of the avenue would need to be cleared of existing businesses and homes, and high-rises built to provide the necessary density for light rail. That's absurd. That's totally backwards. Likewise, if light rail coming down Riverside, going to the airport, again, would have to decimate Travis Heights. Totally unacceptable. We need to totally review that plan and not presuppose something as expensive and ineffective as light rail, and especially something that, to make it work, you have to kill neighborhoods.
Councilmember Shade.
I don't serve on the Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Committee, and I have been watching it, like many citizens, and kind of been wondering, is it too amorphous? Is it too big for people to get their arms around? It's a lot of big vision and lots of big ideas, but again, I'm really a, kind of a more of a meat-and-potatoes type of person who's focused on, what is it going to take to have clean, safe neighborhoods? What do we need to do to provide the public safety needs, the infrastructure needs, based on the statistical information that we have, looking at the facts of where our growth patterns are? And I think that the visioning process was something that was necessary for a lot of people to get involved, but I don't think that it's tied to the reality of, of what we need to do to actually make many of these ideas happen, and there's way too little emphasis currently on the issues that you brought up in the last question with respect to people's basic needs being met. Health and Human Services is a, is a sub-bullet within a bullet. I mean, we can talk about big ideas, but we really need to get more to the nitty-gritty. I hope that during the working group next phase, that that will get a little bit more grounded, and I look forward to participating in that.
Mr. Bailey.
I am against the comprehensive plan as it stands right now. I think that it makes an assumption that, that the people of Austin want to grow as fast as possible. We spent, I think, $120,000 last year sending money to a PR firm out of New York to promote Austin as one of the best places to live, to Forbes Magazine. We're promoting growth here. It doesn't make any sense at all because we can't handle the people that we have now. Our basic infrastructure is not maintained to the level that it needs to be maintained. So when, when talking about the comprehensive plan, I'd like to completely change direction and go back to what I was saying before: focus on roads, fire, EMS. Our basic infrastructure is not doing well. We had two sinkholes in January off East Caesar Chavez, and at the same time, we, you know, it's happening because we're not paying attention to the water lines. They're, they're leaking, and so we need to be focusing on this infrastructure right now, instead of trying to, to grow and continue to grow as fast as possible. This can be done very easily. We can slow growth by raising fees that the developers pay to bring a new project into Austin. They require a lot of city services, and they should have to pay a little bit more of their share of these city services that they require and take some of the burden off of the backs of the Austin taxpayers.
Okay, next question. Waste management is an ever-increasing problem as our city grows. Landfills are reaching their limit. What is your long-term plan to manage our waste? Mr. Nossiger.
Thank you. When I was on the City Council, I had the honor of doing the city's first citywide recycling program, and I think that's been very successful. That's diverted acres and acres of recyclables from our landfills. As we grow, it's an ongoing challenge on how to deal with that, and I think it's essential, first of all, that we have an educated citizenry, and that is part of the city's job to educate the citizens as to the impacts of their consumer habits. That is, if you buy a lot of things that has a lot of packaging, you're going to need to throw a lot of junk away that'll end up in the landfill. So I think education is a key part of it, and hopefully, we can do something to stimulate the recycling markets. Those markets have a lot of fluctuation in them, but I think it's imperative that we continue to separate recyclables from the waste trash, and inevitably, I think we'll have to charge more to haul people's trash away. As the population grows, and this is another good reason, not to artificially stimulate growth in Austin, because the more we do that, the more, everybody's rates will go up for trash, electricity, and water.
Councilmember Shade.
There's so many things I could think about on this issue. So our population growth, in spite of what these guys are saying, it's been a very steady growth. You can look at it from when it was founded in 1839 all the way to now. It's a long, steady line. It's pretty straight, with or without the city promoting itself, with or without the city being involved. And with, when it comes to waste management or any of our utilities, the answer is to run as efficiently as possible, and it's not up to us to increase the marketplace for recyclables. It's up to the person, the company that we contract with to manage that piece, so that we can provide the lowest cost and most efficient, reliable services that we can. I've had the opportunity, just in this term, to be able to be involved in our single-stream recycling contracting, which we're right in the middle of that process. And frankly, we promoted the program before we even had the contract in place to be able to run the program, which is why for the first part of the, first part of my term, we were shipping recyclables to San Antonio at a much higher cost to people. Now we have two companies competing for that business, and they're local, and they will create jobs, and it's a much better situation.
Mr. Bailey.
We're gonna, we're gonna have issues with this. There's, there's no way around it. It's something that has to be dealt with. I remember sitting on a jury one time between lawsuits between landfill companies, and one of the first things that the people said when, when they sat down with all the jurors was, "Nobody likes landfill companies. Nobody likes dealing with trash." And I think that's absolutely right, but it's a necessary service that has to be performed. We are going to get to a point where we need to open another landfill. We need to look at where there's an affordable area to do that with.
Ms. Tovo.
Thank you. I do believe that we need to continue to invest in our recycling program, and I am also pleased that it is now a local business, that we're looking locally rather than looking at supporting out-of-town businesses. But I do agree also that it's, it's really crucial that we work with the community and with residents, as well as with local businesses, to educate about the need to start reducing, reducing packaging, reducing our dependency on bags and, and the other things that are going into our landfills, and continuing to invest in composting and encouraging people to compost and divert other kinds of things out of their trash cans and into a compost pile or a recycle pile. But I do believe focusing on the use of it is also important through education.
Okay. This question now is directed at Councilman, Councilmember Shade. What are the economic advantages and/or disadvantages to having a Formula One racing facility in our community?
Okay. It's like many of the special events that come to town. They increase our tourism business, and they, and they can generate a lot of money in hotel occupancy tax, sales tax, local job creation, and that sort of thing. But my, I've heard several times while I've been on the campaign trail, the city has invested, you know, millions of dollars we haven't. Right now, the state has set aside $25 million that if the local organizing committee can come up with $4 million, it will be matched, okay? And the city has not been given a proposal yet. We haven't invested in anything yet related to this. We, we, as a city, of course, it's wonderful that we were, it's wonderful that we were selected and that we didn't spend a lot of money going out to recruit. We didn't spend any money to go out and recruit this. But it's like Austin City Limits Music Festival, South by Southwest. The city's role is if a group of local people want to bring something, we've got to see if we can, we can deal with hotels, traffic safety, public safety, and all the other things. I mean, this is Texas Relays Weekend, lots of things going on in this community.
Mr. Bailey.
I believe this is an excellent example of one of the problems that we have. I have no problem with a racetrack coming to Austin. Really, I don't. What I don't agree with is that I owe them money. I don't think that you owe them money. I don't think anybody in the city owes people money to come and bring a business here. And so when it boils down to it, we, the $4 million, I guarantee you're going to see that start flowing out of the city and into the F1 track after this election is over. It's going to be happening year after year with that, and we're going to keep subsidizing them, and your tax dollars are hard at work making other people rich. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. I would not try to stop the F1 track from coming. I think they should need to pay their fair share of the, the services that they're going to require on the community, such as expanding roads and the water lines that are being run out to them, and all the services, really. But I don't think that, that I owe them money out of, out of my tax dollars, and I don't think any of my neighbors do, and I don't think any of my friends do. So I have no problem with the racetrack, but I wouldn't have voted to spend city money at all on it.
Ms. Tovo.
Well, I do think that Formula One will provide a source of entertainment for some Austinites and out-of-town visitors, but I think we need to have a very careful discussion in our community. And right now, our community has a lot of needs, and I don't think it should be a priority to put public money toward Formula One. It's, it doesn't, I haven't yet heard a good rationale for why we would want to put public money toward this use, and especially toward a business that has already decided to locate here. As I've talked to people in the community, I don't think there's a great deal of support for putting public money toward this industry, but I do think that, as with all other economic development incentive packages, it is critical that we, as leaders and as a community, look together at the full costs and benefits and evaluate the environmental impacts and a variety of other criteria in assessing whether or not it's a good decision for the city. So I look forward to that public conversation.
Mr. Nossinger.
Thank you. I would not give one dime to encourage the I would not give one dime to encourage the Formula One racetrack to locate in Austin, certainly not $4 million a year for 10 years in the context of teachers being laid off and schools being threatened with closure. I think that's just absurd. Furthermore, that's a motorsport, and people would drive here or fly in their jets from all around the world, presumably, to come here. And that not only consumes a lot of fossil fuels, but it contributes to greenhouse gases and climate change. So I think that is contrary to what Austin says they're trying to do in terms of limiting our carbon footprint. And the discussion, I couldn't help but notice during the discussion of Formula One was when the Gulf of Mexico was being polluted. We're so desperate to drill for oil under extreme circumstances that when things go wrong on that scale, it can pollute an entire Gulf of Mexico. For a motorsport, I don't think so.
One of the most critical problems facing Austin is traffic congestion. How can the city improve the traffic flow? Mr. Bailey?
Absolutely. I've been talking about this repeatedly. I am firmly against light rail or urban rail. I think that that's putting off the needs of today for the wants of tomorrow. I don't think that urban rail is really a plan that would work because for it to work, you really have to have a lot of people driving to parking lots and parking their cars and then getting on that and taking the urban rail, coming back to their car, and then driving home. The number-one focus of the Austin City Council, all of the time, every day, every meeting, should be traffic. We have one of the, we're consistently rated the worst traffic in the country, not the worst, but the top two or three worst cities for traffic in the entire country. That's a major problem. We need to be expanding roads. We need to be adding lanes wherever we can, and we need to be figuring out how to make things run smoother. The traffic lights up near the toll road, they could really time those a lot better to make traffic run through there. And it kind of makes me wonder, is it almost intentional that those lights are set so you have to stop at every one to incentivize you to drive on the toll road? I can't stand that. We really focus, we really need to focus on traffic every day, all the time. Where can we add lanes? Where can we add roads?
Councilmember Shade?
Well, this is one of those issues that we're one of many regional players. We don't get to add lanes and control all the roads that are under the control of the Texas Department of Transportation or CTRMA or any of the other players that are involved here. We have to work as a partner, and there is no silver bullet. And in fact, I would say that in my time campaigning both this time and my experience on the council and when I ran last time, traffic is one of those things that everybody in town hates, but they also hate pretty much all the solutions. So it's a real challenge, and what I support is a multi-pronged approach. I supported, I have been supportive of increasing things that help MOPAC, but also have been interested in helping with supporting our transportation department. They're doing some work on how to do lane differences, how to handle parking differently, other things that can help with traffic congestion. I'm interested in looking at and have been looking at flex time, ways to get some of our larger employers to stagger when people arrive, particularly in the downtown area. This is too short for that.
Mr. Nossiger?
Thank you. Yeah, that's a lot to explain in one minute. That's why. You should go to my website, maxforcouncil.com. I have a detailed explanation of my plan, which involves making Austin the electric-vehicle capital of the world. Here's a problem with light rail. We have the red line. It's on the ground. $150 million takes very few cars off the road. All the money is spent there. Capital Metro has no money now to address an acute traffic and parking situation on South Congress Avenue, which has become a very successful retail entertainment area. Can Capital Metro help address those needs? No. All the money's spent there. Same thing is going to happen if we approve more rail. It eats up all the money. It's not a good deal, and the opportunity cost, that is, what else could we do with that money, are tremendous because a lot of areas in town need help, and if all the money's in light rail, they won't get it. I was walking downtown the other day. In one parking place, there were four scooters. How do we quadruple the parking space available in Austin? Electric scooters.
Ms. Tovvo?
Thank you. I do, traffic certainly is a problem, and I think all of us who are here during South by Southwest knows we need some good solutions to moving people in and out and about the downtown, certainly, but across the city as well. I do support looking toward smaller expenditures that can result in more immediate congestion relief. I supported the Oak Hill, I supported the mobility bonds last year, and I think we've got some good examples down at the Oak Hill Y of a shorter-term project that will, we hope, yield more immediate relief for congestion. I also support moving toward a public transportation system that is multimodal, where we have an integrated bus system that works well with, and I do think we are moving toward, it makes sense to look toward a system that includes urban rail if we can do it in a way that doesn't, that doesn't require the city to bear all the cost of that. And I also agree that we should not, or I would advocate that we not overlook things like creating safer streets, providing sidewalks, safer, more accessible bikeways.
How should the city address the problems of the homeless population in Austin? Ms. Tovvo?
Well, I am very supportive of the council resolution to create more permanent supportive housing. I think that is a model that is humane and responsible and responsive to the situation that we're facing here in the city of an increasing number of homeless individuals who then, who also have other needs, medical needs among them. The permanent supportive model that I think is really a great, a great one to look toward is Foundation Communities. It's a nonprofit, and it provides permanent supportive housing along with other services that include financial literacy and health supports and counseling. And I think, I believe that we need to, as we move forward, with looking toward creating more permanent supportive housing. We also need to do so in a way that provides these in different parts of our city so that all of the permanent supportive housing in our city is not located in one neighborhood or one area of town.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I am not looking to expand homeless shelters in the city. I know that's probably not a popular view. However, some people, some people really legitimately need help, and I think that our churches and our communities in the city are the perfect avenue for people to receive help. It's more interactive. You can meet with somebody instead of making a one-size-fits-all approach where the city's going to help people that are homeless. Anybody can take advantage of that system, and it doesn't, it doesn't go through and determine which people would benefit most from the help and which people would just abuse the system. There are some people that flat-out don't want help, and there are others that really do and really need it and would really benefit from that. And the community is really in a much better position to decide than a bunch of people sitting up at a desk at City Hall. I don't think there's really an effective way of dealing with that through the city. I would certainly use this platform to encourage the community to come together to help solve problems like these. But you can never get rid of homelessness. It's always existed throughout time.
Mr. Nossiger?
Thank you. First of all, the city needs to stop its reckless spending, which actually adds to the homeless population. Rising water bills, electric bills, and taxes are forcing people out of their homes. This is a very difficult issue, though. And one of the ironies of this particular issue is that the better job we do in spending money, for instance, to deal with the homeless, you can actually make the problem grow larger, and that is because of the transient nature of the population. We're not just dealing with Austin's homeless. And if, say, for instance, we spend $1 million to help the homeless in Austin, good news travels fast. It'll travel around the country, and we could indeed have helped 500 people, but 2,000 people move here because Austin helps its homeless. So this is a situation, and it's not an excuse to do nothing, but it is simply the fact that we have to approach this problem very carefully, or in trying to solve it, we could make it grow.
Councilmember Shade?
Thank you. There is, again, not a one-size-fits-all, and I think one of the biggest challenges is we've had this discussion, this community, over the 20-plus years that I've lived here has been that we're trying to use phrases like affordable housing or permanent supportive housing, which are big, you know, big names, big phrases, but they don't necessarily, you can't segment it. I really think there's about 2,000, 3,000 predicted homeless people on the streets any day here in Austin, and we need to use different solutions for the different communities within that homeless community. So the person who is down on their luck or who's lost a job and finds themselves homeless, the woman who's a victim of domestic violence who's out on the street, help up and in a community with the right support. She can move on and be fine. The people who are using our emergency shelter as their full-time home on an ongoing basis, that doesn't work, and that's where we see the problems that we see downtown. We need to do some major repair and rehab work at our emergency shelter downtown, but we also...
Okay. This will be the last question. What assistance, if any, should the city be giving to the school districts? And we'll start there with Mr. Nossiger.
Thank you. Well, of course, the school district is its own entity. It has its own tax base and its own governing body. And I think while there should be cooperation because there are overlapping interests, there's really not a great deal we can do to help them, especially in their current financial crisis. The state government, which happens to be in session right now, can do a great deal to help them by amending the Robin Hood law, which is draining our system, certainly. Something the city can do in general to help the school district, especially preserve the inner-city schools, is to, again, cut spending, stop unnecessary costly projects that we don't even need. These projects and this spending is driving up the cost of living, especially in the core city, and making it more difficult for families to live in the central city. That's why the schools that were talked about for closure are all in the central city. As the demographics change, families have to move further and further to the suburbs. They weren't talking about closing schools in the suburbs. They're building schools in the suburbs.
Ms. Tovvo?
Well, this is an area I've been working on as a community volunteer for a long time, and I have a lot to say about it, but I'm going to try to narrow it down to 45 seconds. But I do applaud the district and the city for beginning to coordinate their planning more closely together, and I think that the city can continue to be a partner in that and should take a stronger leadership role in working with the school district. Some areas of opportunity include looking toward joint use of facilities and also of parks and play spaces. That happens in certain areas, but not across the board, and I think we have more opportunity there, and that would reduce costs and leverage the resources of the city and the school district. The city should be continuing to talk with AISD and looking at whether there are economies that could be realized for the school district in terms of utility and water usage because they are, as you might imagine, very big consumers. And the Families and Children Task Force asked that the city cooperate with the school district to, on a plan to reduce declining enrollments.
Mr. Bailey?
Please check out my website, baileyforchange.com. Really, this is a, this is an issue for the school board. The city council's role is to make sure that our streets are safe for kids to get to and from school. As far as what would I do to, if I got elected, to help the school board? Shoot, I don't need to get elected. I'm on TV right now. Sell the administration building. I mean, that's worth a lot of money. Move to lesser-expensive real estate and start figuring out how to do this. I've actually emailed Dr. Karstarfond with many suggestions that I have, and unfortunately, I don't have enough time right now to go into it. But one of the, one of the things I can tell you is there was a statesman, an Austin American Statesman article about two weeks ago talking about how we don't even follow-up, investigate, or call back more than half the people whose homes are burglarized, yet we're spending a significant amount of our resources in the city pursuing crimes that don't even involve a victim. So we really need to be intelligent with how we allocate all of our resources everywhere. And kids getting to and from school safely, that directly is the job of the Austin City Council. We need to make sure we have safe sidewalks and reduce crime by increasing police presence in areas, by stopping spending so much time on victimless crimes.
Councilmember Shade?
Thank you. I support the effort that's currently underway for the city to be able to help offset some of the expenses where there's economies and where there's efficiencies, and it makes sense. Our school district has its own public safety unit. Is that necessary when we have a strong Austin Police Department? Are there some things that we can pick up? Kathy mentioned the, where we have co-facilities or the opportunity to use those. We do a lot of after-school programming that we actually fund in conjunction with the school district. Perhaps there's a way that we could be taking more of the lion's share of that so that they could spend more money on the things that are related to the books and the classrooms. The bottom line is, is that this is a problem on both the expense side and the revenue side. When I was running my business and we had difficult times, we had to look at both sides of the equation. So I've also been supportive of things that help our tax base, so, you know, especially in the central city. Right now, when it's, if somebody wants to add to their house or deal with the complicated regulatory issues that sometimes the city puts in front of you, they'd just as soon move to a suburb. That's why the suburban areas are growing because it's easier for a family to have the space that they need without the hassles of add-ons. Never enough time.
It's time now for the final statements. It will be one minute, and we'll begin that with Mr. Bailey.
Well, as I said before, I would like to focus on our public safety issues. The fire department needs to be addressed as well on some of the issues that we have and how to best reallocate our resources there. Four-person staffing on our fire engines is a national standard. It takes four people to properly operate the equipment on a fire truck. Now, we're almost there. There's only a couple of fire stations that aren't at four-person staffing yet, and that's a quick and easy fix. It needs to be done right away. And a big thing is looking at how focused we are on things that don't accomplish anything. Our police department is very good at passing out speeding tickets. They're horrible at actually catching criminals, and so this is something that really needs to be addressed. It's a very common sense issue, and I love talking about it. Check me out on Facebook. It's Chris Bailey for Austin City Council on Facebook. I answer every single question that anybody asks on Facebook. It's actually really engaged. You can see a lot of my views on a lot of different subjects on that, so please check it out. Thank you.
Ms. Tovvo?
Well, thanks very much for the opportunity to participate. We've had very short answers to most of these questions, so please visit my website, www.kathyforaustin.com, to find out how to get in touch. I'd love to continue the dialogue. I am running because I believe we need a city council member who listens and respects the city of Austin and its citizens, and I have the experience and the skills to bring about real change at City Hall. I'm going to work hard to keep Austin affordable and to preserve what's great about Austin, from our neighborhood schools to our local businesses to our environment. So thank you again, and I respectfully ask for your vote.
Mr. Nossiger?
Thank you. Today, at a local sandwich shop, a musician approached me and said, "Max, I'm being priced out of my city. I've lived here for 30 years. I've performed all around this city, and I can no longer afford to live here because of the taxes that are going up and my electric bill." I said, "That's happening a lot. Artists and musicians are being forced out of our city. If you think that's a concern, you should vote for me. If you think South Austin deserves some representation on the city council, you should vote for me. If you think it'd be really great to have a gigging musician on the city council, you should vote for me, for the first time in the city's history, no less. If you're concerned about the email scandal and the widening investigation into possible open-meeting violations, you should vote for me. I'll clean up the messes at City Hall. Finally, if you think experience is important, you should vote for me. My experience has saved you billions of dollars, and I will save you billions of dollars on the city council. Check out my website, maxforcouncil.com."
Councilmember Shade?
Thank you. Again, thank you for the forum. Thank you for all of you watching, for your interest in these very important issues, and please also go to my website, randys shade dot com, to learn more about my background and my experience. And I will respectfully ask for your vote as well. But just in summary, my priorities when I got to the council were the core city services, clean, safe neighborhoods, and really making sure that my office is responsive to all citizens, regardless of whether or not they were newcomers or longtime City Hall activists. And I've had a great open-door policy. I have a great track record for responsiveness and for really taking a common sense approach for our long-term planning, as well as for the short-term issues that are right in front of us. I want to have another three years to continue working on that. My experience isn't years on the city council. My experience is running a business in this community, working tirelessly with the nonprofit organizations that make this city really operate and serve our most needy citizens, and being also very active in just generally making this a better place. I got here as a student in '84. I've loved every minute of it, and I thank you for your support.
I want to thank all of the participants for place three at this forum, and I know it's frustrating to only have one-minute answers, but we try to get through as many subjects as possible in the 45 minutes, so we appreciate your patience and your cooperation. We want to...
We want to also thank the sponsor, the Ethics, or Ethics Commission, and the League of Women Voters Nonpartisan Voters Guide will be published in the Austin American Statesman on May the 1st, the day before early voting, and will be available on our website, which is www.lwvaustin.org, as well as the Statesman website and the city's website. It will also be available in public libraries. One last reminder from the League of Women Voters, this Thursday is the last day to register to vote in this election. Early voting begins May the 2nd and ends on Tuesday, May the 10th, and the election is Saturday, May the 14th. So be sure to vote and bring a friend. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.